All right, you are ready to go.
All right, thanks, Joe. Good evening, folks. This is Mike Giappina, the Chair of the Athletics Committee for Exeter Township School Board. Tonight, we are having a meeting. It's a one-item agenda. We're going to talk about our restart plan amidst coronavirus. I'd like to thank you for attending. I'd like to let you know that with me from the board is Hunter Aaron, who's a member of the committee. John Fidler is also on the meeting as well. They're the only two board members that I have. Dave Hamburger, the President of the Board, is also on this call as well. Tom Legath, the Athletic Director, is staff to the Athletic Committee. We also have Patrick Winters, the Assistant Superintendent, and Tom Campbell, the High School Principal. And then we have technical support from Joe Calamita and Joe Way. So thank you very much, everybody, for being here. I'm going to turn this over shortly to Tom Legath and just want to say that we've given him and the district the enormous task and some real heavy lifting in terms of figuring out how we get our act together to be able to go live again on July 1st with our fall sports. And Tom is going to give us an overview on that this evening. I will tell you that we have been pushing Tom very hard as a hospital administrator. I've been in the midst of COVID for the last four months. The virus is real, the disease is real. But there are a lot of things that we can do to mitigate that risk, and I think you're going to see that in Mr. Legath's plan. But important to whatever it is that we do is compliance from our athletes and from our coaches as well. And Tom will go through that. So, Tom, I'm going to turn it over to you. Joe Calamita, as far as questions go, how do you want to handle those?
As with all of our board meetings, they can send an email to questions@myexeter.org.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Tom, I'm going to shift it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Giappina. Can everybody see, everybody see the document on my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so the first thing I'm going to say with developing this plan is that the number-one priority in this plan is the health and safety of our students and our coaches. And we have to remember that as we go through this because this is very extensive, and we're taking every precaution we can to be safe and keep our student athletes and our coaches safe. So with that, I'm going to go briefly over this plan. It's approximately 12 pages with eight pages of text. We'll start with a basic introduction. Again, what you'll see in all this information is everywhere that's flying around the state. And as you see school boards start to approve these plans, you'll see the same terminology here that I'm going to go over with you. So it's an introduction to what COVID-19 is. Then it's a summary of what Exeter School District and Athletic Department will be looking at and what we're presenting to you today with help from PDE, CDC, and the PIAA and the Department of Health. As we go on here and look to possibly resume voluntary workouts for our athletes starting July 1st is in the yellow phase, and there's different types of phases. Yellow phase, there's no more than 25 in a group. And as we would move hopefully eventually to green, it goes to 250. A big point here is the COVID-19 primary point of contact in our school district will be our new incoming superintendent effective July 1st, Dr. Minor. So she will be the point of primary contact for our entire school district on COVID-19 and all questions related to that. The next part of this is the classification of sports. Okay, you have high risk, you have moderate risk, and you have low risk. And anything in high and moderate, you can see, can move to low risk with adaption. The next part of this is the levels of participation. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, we were in Level 1, which was red. We have now moved to currently what we're in is Level 2. You can see what can be done in those stages and what we'll hopefully move to in weeks to come, which is hopeful Level 3 and Level 4. We have guiding principles that we're putting in place for our entire junior high and senior high athletes. Every student athlete will get a temperature of a laser that will not touch, no touching of the forehead. Will get a laser read and will be documented and charted. You will see there that there'll be waiver forms filled out prior to workouts by students and coaches. Obviously, with the student is also a parent signature. Basic things that you've seen with hygiene of washing of the hands. You know, do not shake the hands. If you don't feel well, you're sick, stay home. Avoid close contact, six feet social distancing, as you can see here with the next phase. Cleaning and sanitation. You know, this is going to be, some of the coaches are going to have, basically, the coaches that are on this meeting and, you know, you got a med kit from Audrey. You're basically going to get a med kit from myself, and it's going to have gloves, masks, disinfectant, paper towels with you at all times and you need for our athletes. Safe access to facilities. This is something that will be gone over once a plan is approved with each individual coach of when they are starting and what they are doing. Every, every sport we have is using a different facility. So everyone in terms of a safe access to facilities will be different. The necessary paperwork that happens come August 10th for the heat acclimation for football and then August 17th for the rest of our fall sports are listed here in necessary paperwork. We did set up physical dates with Commonwealth Orthopedics, which is our local orthopedic center in Exeter on Fairlane Road. And you also have a sign-up penis link that most parents know. I sent a parent link out, I believe, about June 2nd with information to sign up. And as I've checked, there have been a tremendous amount of families who have signed their child up for physicals so far. If you do not want to do that, you can easily go to your family physician or to like an urgent care to get the physical. But all, all physicals are done online on www.exeteregles.org into our online physical system. Next part, disinfection and sanitation. Again, it kind of addresses the same things that we talked about before. Six feet social distancing. Again, coaches, students, and staff not permitted participating, following risk of exposure, chewing gum, spitting, licking fingers, any sunflowers. We will have hand sanitizer stations open at all indoor and outdoor facilities of where your respective sport would be participating. Like I said before, athletes and coaches check-in procedure. Number one, if you, if the student or a coach exhibits any of these symptoms here, before you even come, stay home. And I go back to what I started with. The health and safety of all of our students and our coaches is the number-one factor here. So if you are submitting one of these things, stay home. Again, I went over what the pre-screening will be from the coaches in terms of taking a laser of temperatures, charting that down, and then everyone will be using the social distancing. And I don't mean to keep repeating myself, but and again, entering and exiting a facility will be different for every single sport of depending on where they're at, and that's something that will be gone over with myself as the Athletic Director with the coach for that sport and where they're practicing or having a workout. Workout groups should stay the same. There should not be mixing of any kids within groups. So coaches will know that they will have each group. Day 1 will be the same, day 2, and so on. Coaches will be required to adhere to all guidelines that are provided and sign off on the information as well. Attendance is completely optional. These are starting as if effective July 1st, if approved by the school board. These are voluntary workouts. Weight room facilities. Doors will be opened in the weight room. Bottles will be provided to disinfect after a student works out. They will spray wipe down. There will be no spotting in the weight room. All kids will be on their own to lift weights. We go down to some of the things with COVID-19, the testing and symptoms. And these are, these are things that would happen if a test is confirmed or were notified that someone would have this, and then we would start and notify the Department of Health and take appropriate actions on their guidelines of what we should do. What this is here is a chart that every coach will have on every single student. And you see here in bold, this is confidential and will not be viewed by anyone else other than the coach. That they will chart every day a student and athlete comes in, coach's name at the top, coach's name, sport up top here in the top right, and then a chart of the date and what their temperature is and if they're having any of these symptoms here. But again, this will be on a clipboard with the coach, and only the coach will be the one that looks at these, that looks at this document. And the other information we have here is just information that, once again, if this is approved by the school board, will be posted on the website, just part of the packet that you can look to to know more about COVID-19 and informational items, as well as information from the Department of Health with also websites that resources that you can look at for CDC. Any, any other thing with COVID-19 that you're curious or information about? Oh, that is the end of the plan. To return. Mr. Giappina?
Okay, I would like to throw it out to any of the board members if they have any questions of Mr. Legath or if any of the administrators have any questions. I mean, I will again reiterate that what Mr. Legath has laid out here are fundamentals that really will serve all of the extracurriculars in the fall. I know that we had thought that we would have some guidance on the band. We have not gotten that guidance as of yet, so that is a little delayed. We're waiting on that. We're hoping that we have something this week. Tom had mentioned that Dr. Minor was the leader of the pandemic group here at Exeter Township, but there is an entire committee that she is creating. So this, there will be a pandemic task force made up of school district leadership. And I can tell you that from my experience and my interactions with some of the administrators on the call, we are taking this very, very seriously. Compliance is a must. There's going to have to be enforcement. It's just the critical that we follow this plan. Tom, you mentioned approval of the school board, just for the notification of people who are watching. There is a school board workshop tomorrow night. I believe these, this item is on the agenda for discussion. Workshop, we discuss these issues prior to a voting meeting the following week. We have a voting meeting on June 23rd. At that point, the board will take action on this plan, and then we'll go from there. Any board members?
Mike, thanks. Dave Hamburger, you know, I have a question for Tom. I think it's excellent, excellent document. And, and Mike, you talked about enforcement. You talked about how important it is that this, this plan that folks comply with this plan, whether it's coaches or students. Is there anything written in the plan? And maybe I missed it if it's in there, sorry. But is there anything in there in terms of consequences for either coaches or students who willfully and chronically fail to abide by the restrictions or the protocols that are laid out in the plan? Somebody who blatantly disregards, you know, the, the safety measures that we have in place here?
Dr. Hamburger, that's a, that's a great question. So in writing in the plan, no, to answer your question. But a huge but, capital letters, that is something that if I'm notified or see that, you know, it would be handled in the way it needs to be handled with that. But there's nothing in writing to answer your question that does state that.
I'm just wondering, you know, so many times, you know, in order to not be arbitrary or in the interest of being as consistent as possible, I wonder whether there should be any, any language added that really kind of talks about consequences. I mean, I'm just trying to be, you know, preventative here, but, you know, I think when people know what some of the consequences may be, it also serves as a deterrent for ignoring, let's say, these very, really important safety, safety protocols that you have in place here. And by the way, I think they're excellent, but there's always going to be somebody. And we've seen it in society today. You know, we see it every day when we go out in society who, who don't take it seriously and disregard it. So I'm just throwing that out as a, as a potential consideration, you know, for.
And what I'll do in the next couple of days is I will research something for that. I know that as Athletic Directors in Burke County, there was an email going and text message going around about that today from another school district. So hopefully, if something comes up, or I will look to create something to get that into, add to the plan, but that's a great idea.
Thanks, Tom.
Anybody else? Any other board members?
Mike, I'm good. This is Hunter. I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Hunter. John? Mr. Fidler?
No, I'm, I'm good, Mike. Thank you.
Okay. Joe, do we have any, anything from the public at this point?
Nope, not that I see.
Okay. Tom Campbell, Patrick Winters, any, you know, issues or concerns on your end? You know, you're ultimately the building leader and top administrator. So just curious if you have any, you know, issues, concerns at this point?
You know, Mike, this is Patrick, you know, no, no significant concerns. You know, I think, you know, Tom has done a great job here putting a plan together that's comprehensive, that addresses, you know, the things that we need to address. You know, I think, you know, the one thing that, you know, we have to constantly be thinking about is, you know, making sure that we have enough supplies and, you know, as far as, you know, cleaning supplies are concerned. And so, you know, we're, we're talking to the IU, you know, myself, and we've been talking with Dr. Minor to, you know, make sure that we're covered there. You know, Tom, my understanding is that of all the sports, football is probably the one that may have the greatest need for cleaning. Not that our sports won't. I'm not implying that, but is that accurate?
Yeah, just because of the, just because of the
Numbers.
The numbers of the kids, just like when the band gets implemented with the numbers that we have in the band, that's another. Is even just the hand sanitizer of how many times they would go over to pump to get sanitizer with the band having 100-plus members in football. But yes, that is why.
Yeah, Mike, I've got nothing more to really add. I do want to compliment Tom on the thoroughness of what he put together. The only piece that I would add that really isn't part of the plan is that, is you are surely well aware, and I think we all are, that this whole pandemic has evolved quickly and, you know, we're farther away from the end of fall sports than we are from the beginning of the pandemic when we left school in March. So that leaves a lot of room for watching this and reacting as things on the ground change.
Yeah, totally agree with that. I can tell you from a healthcare perspective, we have great concerns about the fall. And I just believe that if we can practice the plan that's been put in place, you know, we, you know, we won't be, you know, hopefully it will be as perfect as we can be. I mean, these kids aren't, you know, they're all over the place. Everybody is. We can practice social distancing. If we can be, you know, do the masks, you know, hopefully we'll keep that curve as flattened as we can. Tom, I do have a question around attendees at events. I mean, has there been any guidance? You know, we get into, you know, we make it into the fall and we make it into events. Who, you know, are we going to be televising these things or what are we doing?
So at this point, Mike, this plan right now is just for, and I've zoomed down here, is just for, at the bottom in bold at the top here, student, limited to student athletes, coaches, officials, and staff only. I don't know. We will get more guidance from PIAA. I think closer to August 10th with heat acclimation, starting with football, about spectators. Will we have the capability to livestream all of our sporting events if spectators are not, not allowed? Absolutely, 100% we will. We will be able to do that for everybody to see. But again, it's, if you were to tell me, you know, last Thursday that we were going to be able to possibly resume activities, workouts, July 1st, I would say that wouldn't have happened. I had a conversation with Mr. Campbell about that earlier this afternoon. So I think we're moving in the right direction, but I think there's a lot of unanswered questions still to come, and that is one of them, Mr. Giappina, is the spectators.
Okay. I do see a question that popped up, but at this point, I'm not able to get to it. Joe, can you read that question?
Is it the, is there a timetable for when there will be a plan for band?
I can't see the question, but if that is the question, the short answer is we were hoping to have guidance from BCIU, from PIAA, or from Pennsylvania Department of Health, from the governor on Friday. We did not get that guidance over the weekend, so we're reasonably assured that we should have that guidance sometime this week. We believe that the band will be on its normal schedule, but there's certainly going to be some restrictions. I believe Dr. Minor mentioned last night that they're, you know, just, I mean, they're, they're getting very, very granular about how they're going about this. So there's going to be specific direction, given that this is an aerosolized illness. So that woodwind instruments, as an example, will have to be, you know, somehow dealt with in such a way that we prevent the spread of the, the spread of the virus, so that we're not aerosolizing this thing and pushing it out. If somebody has it, if they're asymptomatic or whatever. So the short answer is, we don't have an answer, but we're hoping to get something this week. What I've asked Mr. Legath to do or the administration to do is when that information does come out, we know there's a high level of interest. We have a great band. We want them to be ready to go on the timetable that's scheduled, and that's the goal. Is that fair, Tom?
Absolutely. When, when this comes out, I, you know, I'd love to work with Mrs. Selkey, Mrs. Crotty, and Mr. Campbell, and, and we'll get, we'll get a plan together. I have no, I have no fear that we're not going to have something ready right away.
And knowing the band and how they have their act together, the whole music program, I'm sure that they've already got, you know, a, a plan underway, and they're probably just waiting for guidance, as we all have waited from the Department of Health and the governor and, you know, even the CDC, who even changes their guidance every couple of days based on what they're learning.
Mike, there's another chat, not necessarily a question, but a comment in the chat.
Can you read it, Dave?
Yeah, it says, it's from the range, Selkey, Tall Palace. Cavalcade of bands, a competition circuit in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware is compiling information from PDE, CDC, American Band Masters Association. They will be putting together guidance for restarting. I am confident that we will be able to continue. So it wasn't a question, more of a comment.
All I would say on that is, and we, the board, technically, the board will have to take, you know, may.
You're on mute, Mike. You're on mute, Mike.
Thanks. What I, what I was, what I was saying, Dave, is depending, if the guidance that they, is provided is dramatically different than what Mr. Legath has for some other programs, I don't know if the board would have to take an action or not, or, or what that would be. So I guess we'd have to play that by ear, but I guess what I'm saying to all of our fall sports and our band participants and extracurriculars is that our desire is to get on top of all the guidance that we get and allow these things to happen. But we will rely on our coaches, our leaders, our own students, their parents, and our booster clubs to ensure that we're, you know, complying with these rules. You do not want to get coronavirus, trust me.
And, and my understanding too, you know, Mike, is that the guidance that we're looking at here, I mean, the information that we're going to be looking at and as a board will be approving is strictly for our sports program, our athletic program. So, and band doesn't necessarily fall under that. There'll be probably a different and very similar kind of a need on our part to put together a document that's comparable but different than this that reflects, you know, specifics for that. And it's also my understanding that not only are we going to have this document that sort of oversees, sort of like umbrella document for all sports, but each individual sport will have its own kind of regulations or protocols that they'll have to have in place before, before they start. Is that correct, Tom?
That is correct, Dr. Hamburger. So once this is, this hopefully is approved by our school board on June 23rd, I would then send an email out to all of our head coaches that they will have to then, you know, meet with me and create a plan, like Dr. Hamburger said. And again, I said this earlier about pertaining to their facility, because everybody where they work out is different, and we want to adapt to where they're working out.
Yeah, okay, Tom, thank you. We do, we do have another question. I didn't hear Mr. Legath mention masks except for in the kit being distributed to coaches. Who specifically is being asked to wear masks to wear masks?
Thank you, and I apologize if I missed that. All coaches are required to wear masks at all times. We are not asking the students to wear masks, but all coaches are required to wear masks.
So, Tom, I would ask that we just check with Commonwealth Orthopedics. Again, it's my understanding that the importance of the mask is when people are not social distancing. So that if a coach, for instance, is by him or herself away from a crowd of people and want to take that mask off, you know, it's 95 degrees and humid. I would just get some clinical guidance on that. But that's my understanding of the, the need for the masks is because of that spread of somebody as close by you. But again, I'm not a clinician. Perhaps COA can give us some direction on that.
I will, I will reach out to them for direction.
I thought of a question after Dr. Winters' comments. Whose job will it be to make sure that all of the sanitizers and disinfectants are on the government-approved list for COVID-19?
Well, that's something that, you know, I would, I would arrange, and then I would make sure that Dr. Minor is on board with all of those being our primary point of contact and also work with the Facilities Department.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Any other, any other?
Just, just one final comment, Mike, from me. I just, you know, I think it's important just to mention as well, as we've kind of said all along, that, you know, the health and safety of our kids is what is of the utmost importance. And so if at any point in time, Mr. Legath lets Dr. Minor know that we can't implement this plan for athletics, the way in which it's intended and designed, then it stops, you know, no matter at what point in the season we may be at that point in time, it stops because ultimately what we care about the most is that our students are healthy and safe.
Totally makes sense. Tom, I did have, it just popped in my head, for those sports that might use a facility that is not as ours, I'm thinking the water polo teams, will Albright College be following a similar protocol? Or will they, will be, will they understand what our protocol is?
Uh, again, great question. Um, yes, to both of those. So that is something that I will be working with the Albright College on and their athletic department and their facilities as to what I have and what we have and then what they have and put that together.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Well, Tom, uh, I thank you, Dr. Minor, Dr. Winters, Mr. Campbell, the board members on the call, Hunter Arons, John Fidler, Ann Hearing jumped on, Dave Hamburger, our IT folks, Joe Calamite and Joe Way for your monumental support. I'm talking and not realizing that I'm muted. So I wanted to thank everybody. I want to thank, uh, the administration, Dr. Winters, uh, Tom Legath, Tom Campbell for your work. I want to thank my board members, Dave Hamburger, Hunter Arons, Ann Hearing jumped on, John Fidler, for your, uh, support and participation in this meeting. I want to thank Joe Calamita and Joe Way for your mon- monumental efforts over the last couple of months and attempting to, to keep us connected. Uh, this item will be a discussion on the workshop agenda tomorrow night, um, on another Zoom meeting. And then we will take a board action on, uh, June 23rd at the voting meeting. Both of those are public meetings. The, uh, the public is invited to participate in those meetings and hopefully we'll see you there. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Nice job.